Just want to remind everybody that special town meeting is this Saturday, October 16th at 1:00 PM at the Westford Academy Trustees Field. We need a quorum of 200 people to start the special town meeting. So I'm urging everyone to attend. It shouldn't be a long town meeting. There are only, there are nine articles, one of which is going to be dismissed. So, but they are all important and certainly important to the folks and the groups who are bringing forward these articles. So hope to see everybody there Saturday afternoon. Anybody from the board have anything for open forum? Okay, I don't see any. So moving right along to our 7:05 PM item, which is a request to authorize the tree warden to issue a permit for the removal of two public shade trees located at 6 Hildreth Street as required by Mass General Law, Chapter 87, Section 4, cutting down or removing public shade trees. Approval of the Select Board. So I believe this is a public hearing. So is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
In a second. All those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. And Steve, good evening.
How are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. So tonight before you have a request to authorize the tree warden to issue a permit for the removal of two public shade trees at 6 Hildreth Street. Back on May 24th, I was contacted by the owner of 6 Hildreth Street regarding two trees that he suspected to be dying. The two trees are in fact in the towns right of way. They are a 16-inch Norway maple and a 20-inch Norway maple. They are deteriorating rapidly and do pose a risk to utilities located in the public way and the private property adjacent to the trees. Per Mass General Law, Chapter 87, a tree warden public hearing was conducted on October 4th. There was no objections at the October 4th meeting to the removal of the trees. And the property owner did agree to replace the two trees with native species trees. It's worth noting that the two Norway maples are invasive species. So they're not certainly ideal trees to have within the right of way. But the reason, the main reason this request is before the Select Board tonight is per Mass General Law, if an objection is made in writing to the removal of trees, it does require Select Board approval in order for them, for a permit to be issued. We did receive an objection, not necessarily to the removal of the trees, but to the, to the public hearing process, which we addressed. And as a result, we're bringing this request before the Select Board tonight to authorize the removal of the trees. It's my recommendation, based on an inspection of the trees, that, that they are removed. The significant canopy loss at this point, there are some cavities, insect infestation. And as I said, they do pose a risk to the utilities in the public way. So I think removal is certainly warranted.
Thank you. Comments from the board?
No.
Okay. Bob Jeffries, I see you're out there and you have your hand raised. So do you have a comment or a question?
Yeah, my main problem here is process. I followed the tree wardens agenda for years, ever since Dick Emmett said that I should take it over because that's what he used to do. And there are no agendas. The last agenda was May 20th, when there was a large clearing at the request of Verizon over in Nam. It was never posted on any agenda by any tree warden. I couldn't actually find out who the tree warden is. I'm not even sure we have a tree warden. Tree warden is supposed to be under the highway superintendent or the highway superintendent. I can't even find that we have a highway superintendent. So this was never posted under the Shade Tree Act. This was posted under the Scenic Roads Act. It was not resolved in the meeting that I objected to, and it still hasn't been posted on the tree as a Shade Tree Act. The two trees in question, one of them is not really in significant trouble at all. It's a leaner because the other tree is shading it. It's to the northeast of the other one. The other one does have significant damage, but that's not the point. The point is this isn't being done correctly. You have to do it under the Shade Tree Act. It has to be determined by somebody that these trees are actually in need of removal, and that should be the tree warden, except apparently we don't actually have a tree warden. And an arborist should be involved in this. Then my other problem with this is the Shade Tree Act is not for facilitating the cutting down of shade trees. It was done to maintain shade trees. I don't see any maintenance of shade trees, and this is happening all over the town. We had an enormous tree taken down the dates before Edgar Allan Poe stayed over on Granville Road. There was no hearing. There was nothing. I drove by one day, it was there. The next day, the road was closed and the tree was gone. I have no idea why that tree was taken down. I have no idea what the condition of that tree was, but it wasn't done properly. And it's not just there. As I go around town, I see more and more trees that just, they're gone. On Hildreth, there's already a tree that was cut down on that same, in front of that same property. Never, no hearing, anything. And it's improbable, but it applies to any tree over an inch and a half in diameter. The tree on Granville Road was at least three feet in diameter. These trees, one of them is not, as far as I can tell, and I'm not an arborist and I'm not pretending to be one, but I looked at the tree. It's a leaner for sure, because that's the only way it could get sun. The other one has been neglected for years. We're supposed to be maintaining these shade trees. And at the rate we're going, we're just losing tree after tree because it's mostly whatever Verizon wants. And just call these trees endangering the utilities? No. Are they endangering the road? Perhaps. But the one tree is actually shedding itself down, and that's not the only tree. If you go along Hildreth and look at the other trees, none of them have been maintained. So the process is you have to post the tree, and I objected because there was no process. You have to post the tree. It has to be under Chapter 87. You have seven days unless somebody objects. And then you have, and I would prefer that an arborist make these decisions rather than, I don't know if Steve is an arborist or not. I don't even know if he's actually the tree warden because nobody in Public Works could answer that question when I asked it. Who is the tree warden?
Okay, okay, got it. So Jody, thank you, Bob.
Thank you. Actually, Chip Barrett was our tree warden when he retired. And I did name Steve Cronin as our tree warden in the interim. We have not filled the highway superintendent position. I don't think that Chip was an arborist, and I don't believe Steve is, but that hasn't been the case. But in terms of all the other statements above, I'm not aware of this. I haven't heard about this. I'm happy to look into it. But I cannot speak to the specific trees, other than the two on the agenda tonight. I don't know if Steve has more on that.
Yeah. So as Jody said, Chip was not an arborist, neither am I. We do have arborist experience on staff at the Highway Department, as well as a contract with a tree company that does have arborists on staff that did look at the tree. You know, as far as the process goes, because Hildreth Street is a scenic road, you know, we asked council to give us an opinion on whether or not this needed a scenic road application. You know, their initial look at it, they thought it did. Once Mr. Jeffries made his objection, we asked him to look at both the scenic road bylaw, Chapter 87, and determine whether or not, you know, this needed a joint public hearing. If it is a scenic road, you know, it was our interpretation that it required a joint public hearing with the planning board and the tree warden. After council looked at it, they determined that because there was no paving work involved with the, with the tree, and the tree was within the right of way, that in fact, a tree warden would be just, a tree warden hearing would be sufficient. They advised us basically to conduct the tree warden hearing independent of the planning board meeting, which we did on October 4th. The applicant withdrew their application for the scenic road permit. So the hearing was conducted just as a, as a tree warden hearing. So, you know, as far as the posting notifications, they all met the requirements of Chapter 87. It was, you know, so we feel that it covered all those requirements as well. So, you know, on advice of council, we felt that we met the requirements of a, of a tree hearing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Bob, I see you have your hand up again. And then Sue Thomas has her hand up after that. So Bob?
Yeah, the point is it was never posted under Chapter 87. It was only posted, and it still is posted today, under the scenic roads by law. I actually think that you can't ever take a tree down under the scenic roads by law. I think you might have to go there also, but you have to post under Chapter 87. And Chapter 87 itself calls for a joint hearing of the planning board and the tree ward. The point is, it was never properly posted. There were four properties that were notified that this was happening. It was not broadcast out to the town that this was a Chapter 87. It was only broadcast out that it was scenic roads, and there were only four butters that were concerned. So I don't change my opinion at all. This is not properly done. Just do it the right way. That's all.
Okay, got it. Sue Thomas?
Hi.
Hi. Go ahead.
Care one would look for or sign up for the postings under this act?
So under Chapter 87, the requirement is that it has to be posted in a local publication in two successive weeks ahead of the, ahead of the tree warden hearing. It has to be posted in two public places, which was at Town Hall and at the Highway Department garage. And it has to be posted on the trees itself, which it, which it was. You know, so that's why we felt that it meet the, met the notification requirements under Chapter 87. The posting itself, you know, was listed as a public hearing notice and posting and did reference both Mass General Law, Chapter 87, and Mass General Law, Chapter 40.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sue. I'm going to go back to the board now, Bob, because I know you disagree. Okay, and I, and I think we all got that. Are there comments or questions from the board?
I have a question. What's the urgency of this? If, if Bob's got this objection and there's any doubt, we could postpone this to our next hearing or next meeting. We can continue the public hearing until then and make sure they all I's are dotted and T's are crossed. I can see the diseased tree. I don't know. I've seen a lot of Norway maples bite the dust in this town. They don't seem to survive very well. And one that one is, that one needs to be taken down. I agree with that. Not so sure about the second one. But if there's any doubt, we could do that. Or we could say, go ahead.
Tom?
So with respect to Bob's position on this, it sounds like we did what we would do normally if, if someone objected to the process, just seek guidance from council. And it sounds like Steve has asked the question and has received the professional guidance of council that we in fact didn't meet the requirements here. And so if, if that's the case, and I think if he did have an arborist, as he said, take a look at it and has reached determination those trees should come out. It seems like we can make a decision on those trees. And it seems like the process has been investigated. At least if we agree on the trees, we could take, seems, and with the guidance we've got from council, it seems like we could proceed.
To John's point, as far as urgency goes, I can't predict exactly when, when and if those trees will come down. You know, under the, the hearing notification process, once again, it does require, you know, a few weeks notification in newspapers and on the trees as well. So, you know, we could certainly allow for, you know, reposting under Chapter 87. But it would require a few weeks time, a few weeks lead time in order to make sure we, we met the publication deadlines.
Okay. Okay, Bob, go ahead, but try not to repeat what you have already said, okay?
All I'm asking for, I don't care about the trees. I care about the process. This is the thing that I, I followed the tree wardens' agendas. It was never agenda. I followed specifically whether it was ever posted as a Chapter 87, and it was never posted that way. I just wanted to go the right way so that, this is my hobby now. I'm retired. All I'm going to do is look after the trees. So.
Well, you know, Bob, I, I hear there might be an opening for a tree warden.
I'm not qualified.
We need a list of Bob's hobbies.
Definitely. All right. Thanks, Bob. What's the pleasure of the board? Do we delay this a couple of weeks and repost it and re-advertise? And make sure we've crossed all our I's and dotted our T's? Or go forward? Scott?
Yeah, I mean, we are the town's policy board. We should be following policy. So if there's any doubt, it sounds like there may be. I'd rather wait a couple of weeks and make sure that we do things correctly than, I mean, than rush it. If it falls down tomorrow, well, I'll feel bad. But my guess is it's been there for a year in pretty bad shape. It'll be there in another two weeks.
Okay. I saw Anita nodding her head, and now she has her hand up. So Anita?
Yeah, I was just going to agree. If there's no sense of urgency, I'm, I'm good with waiting a couple of weeks as well.
All right. So it sounds like sort of the consensus of the board, and I agree if there's no urgency, is why don't we, why don't we continue this public hearing? Let's continue it, because it's public hearing, I have to continue it to a date and time certain. So let's continue it to two weeks from today, which is October 26th, at 7:10.
So moved.
Actually, I don't know. Okay. I don't know that I need a motion, but go ahead.
I think you do.
All right, go ahead. Anita's seconded. So Anita?
Aye.
John?
One question. Is that enough time, is that enough time for Steve to?
I thought somebody said it was two weeks. Is that right? Is that not enough time? Do we need to continue it to our first meeting in November?
I think you probably will in order to make the publication dates in two successive weeks and give the paper advance notice. Yeah, we'll have to.
All right.
Go further.
All right. So let's, whatever our first meeting in, what's our first meeting in November, Jody?
November 9.
Okay. So why don't we continue this hearing, this public hearing until November 9th at 7:10 PM? And we had a motion in a second. So all those in favor, Anita?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Bob. Serious, there is a position open. All right. We are at our 7:10 PM item, which is the consent agenda. And we have a request to approve the following. A banner for the Westford Academy Theater Arts production of the SpongeBob musical. The applicant is Stephanie Goslin and Maggie Sulka on behalf of the Westford Academy Theater Arts. The date is Saturday, November 6th through Tuesday, November 16th, in front of the JV Fletcher Library. Second is the Boy Scout Troop 159 Annual Winter Sporting Goods Sale. The applicant is Malik Shah. The dates are November 6th to November 16th. The location is in front of the First Parish Church. Then we have a request to use the town common in the bandstand for a memorial service in All Saints' Day. The applicant is the First Parish Church United, Sunday, November 7th, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We have a request for the Veterans Day program by Ryan Cobbly, who's our Veteran Services Officer, on Thursday, November 11th, from 8:00 AM to 2:00 PM. And then lastly, the Hanukkah Memorial, I'm sorry, the Hanukkah menorah display. The applicant is Rabbi Zalman of the Chabad of Neshoba Valley. The dates are Sunday, November 28th through Tuesday, December 7th, 2021. And then a Hanukkah celebration. Again, the applicant is Rabbi Zalman of the Chabad of Neshoba Valley, and the date is Sunday, November 28th, from 4:30 to 5:30 PM. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I forgot one. I'm sorry. I didn't turn the page. I forgot one item on our consent agenda, which is a road race walk by the Friends of the Poor Walk. The applicant is Diane Gavel for the committee, a committee member of the Westford Friends of the Poor. The date is Thursday, November 11th, from 8:30 AM, 8:30 to 11:30 AM. The location is the start and finish at St. Catherine's on North Main Street, and then Town Farm Road to Forge Village Road to Cold Spring Road to Patton Road, Route 225, East Prescott Street, and back to St. Catherine's. So is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
So moved. Second. And then the clerk, the clerk should have caught you, Andrea.
Yeah, well, you know. He's falling down on his job.
I was just waiting till she turned the page.
All those in favor? John?
Aye.
Anita?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Aye. All right. We are at our 7:15 PM item, which is an update and recommendations from the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee on achieving Westford's net zero greenhouse gas emissions goal by 2050, 2050. And Beth, hello?
Hello.
Hello.
Hello, and thank you for asking us to present tonight. My name is Beth Perkins, and I'm, I've been a member of the Clean Energy and Sustainability since February of this year, when the committee was expanded. We now have nine members. Mike Berlinski is our chair, and I think several other members of our committee are here tonight. I know it's a fairly lengthy presentation. I wanted you to all see what we've been doing, but I'm going to try and go through the slides very quickly. So I'm ready for the next slide. One, one question, I think maybe before we begin though, is would the board prefer to wait until the end of the presentation for questions, or would you like to ask?
Yes.
Okay, Andrea. The objectives for the meeting are to report the progress and status of the roadmap, which was actually required by the resolution that was passed at town meeting. But very importantly, we'd like to gather feedback from the members of the Select Board on the progress that we've made to date and to help us with any guidance moving forward. At the end of the presentation, we'll be discussing one of our recommendations, which is to hire a sustainability coordinator. So this is, there are a lot of words on this slide because I thought it was important to put the actual wording of the resolution. This was submitted by Westford Climate Action one year ago at special town meeting. Not going to read through it, but there are two components. One was asking Westford to commit to take actions to promote clean energy and reduce fossil fuel use. I think the important words in that first section are in private homes and businesses as well as municipal buildings. I'll talk a little bit about that later. The second was that the Select Board would, would charge a committee with coming up with the roadmap to net zero, which is what we're here to talk about tonight. So this has been a big year for news about climate. I'm sure all of you are aware of that. In March, we had Massachusetts passing the Next Generation Roadmap, a sweeping climate bill described as the biggest climate bill that the state has passed. The law now dictates that the state must achieve net zero emissions by, by 2050. At the same time, at a national level, national level, we had President Biden setting a goal of net zero 2050 also, and adding a goal for 100% renewable energy by 2035. And also that 50% of the vehicles sold in this country by 2030 will be electric vehicles. So those are challenging goals. We also have the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change. Produced the largest study ever done on climate, which was pretty devastating. And it described, it was described as code red for humanity. I think one of the important things that came out of that was that there is a definitive relationship between climate change and natural disasters. So this is the timeline that we've been, that we're working on. So the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee was charged in February 2021 with the development of the roadmap. The charter for the committee was changed and the name of the committee was changed. So it used to be known as the Energy Committee, is now the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. We formed a subcommittee to work on the roadmap and in April, and kicked that off with what is always the first step in any roadmap, climate roadmap, which is to do a greenhouse gas inventory. So we completed that. There's still a couple of details out there we're after, but completed that in June of 2021. We have also published a community survey. More than 300 people have submitted surveys. We're currently compiling those results, so I'm not going to talk about that tonight. Here we are in October 2021, reporting into you our first version of the roadmap. 1.0 will be published within a week or so, and we're looking for endorsement from the full committee, the full Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee for that version one of the roadmap. After that, we plan to go out and get community engagement, to speak to businesses, residents, and so on in town. And we will accept their feedback, adjust the roadmap accordingly, and then publish a first edition we're targeting for spring 2022. Our methodology. We did investigate getting a grant to hire consultants, which many other towns have done, to do a roadmap through the Massachusetts Vulnerability Planning Program. We were told by the state agency, as well as consultants, that that kind of funding for that purpose was not going to be available this year. We wanted to move ahead. We decided to go as a, you know, a volunteer organization and, and use the following documents as a foundation. So it's the Massachusetts 2050 Roadmap Plan, as well as the plan of many of the cities and towns in our area. If you have the actual document that I sent out to Eric, the PDF, it has live links to these other documents if you wanted to take a look at them. Now, we had to adjust, we looked at all the goals and action items that were in these plans, but had to be adjusted based on Westford's greenhouse gas inventory, as well as our, the characteristics of Westford. For instance, we have a fairly large commercial industrial sector, which many of those other towns don't have. We don't have sidewalks. Many of those other towns do. We don't have MBTA. So how will the roadmap be published? Many people, right now, the document is about 30 pages. Many people, right now, the document is about 30 pages, and that compares to many of the other towns that are 40 or 50 pages. We know that most people aren't going to read a 40 or 50-page document. So we will be preparing. We believe it is very important to prepare multimedia presentations that are targeted to different audiences. Web-based, we've looked at many other towns that have published their roadmap on the web so that people can see the higher level and drill down to the areas that they're most interested in. We'll be doing PowerPoint presentations like this to targeted audience, to business groups, resident groups, and so on. So although, in the very near future, we're going to be showing you all a long PDF-type document, we are planning on presenting it in a much more targeted way. So version one is completed. We have already received feedback from local experts, some stakeholders, climate advocates. And the North Middlesex Council of Governments representative, whose name is David Ryder, took a close look at it, provided very thoughtful feedback. And then he went off to get married. He's going to return and meet with us to go over more details later. As I mentioned, we're going to be looking for endorsement by the full Clean Energy Committee and then begin holding community meetings for feedback in November. So we started with an inventory. This inventory is used to establish a baseline and also to enable us to prioritize our goals and strategies. We produced it using a tool that was developed by the Metropolitan Area Planning Council and was used by many of those towns I mentioned earlier. They used the same inventory tool that we used. So the next slide, I'm sure, looks a little confusing at first glance. The chart on the right actually came out of the inventory tool. But on the left, for your convenience, I have taken the subsectors and organized them in order of greenhouse gas emissions from largest to smallest. So this is where we can kind of grasp the takeaway from the greenhouse gas inventory, which is that passenger vehicles and buildings are our two target areas. They are generating the most greenhouse gases. Also, we were surprised by the results in that residential buildings and commercial and industrial buildings were very similar. I think many of us who live here in Westford don't appreciate the size of our commercial industrial sector, but we need to conduct this roadmap or to develop this roadmap because they are about the same size as the residential sector. So to kind of put things in context, or start at a high level, I put this chart in, which is the pillars of decarbonization from the state. So where do we begin? How do we attack this problem? We attack it with these, in these four different areas. One is end-use energy. So this is all of the, we need to transition all of the things that currently consume fossil fuels to be electric. So that includes our cars and our furnaces and our heating, you know, our air conditioning systems. And all of the end uses that consume fossil fuels need to be transitioned to electricity. Number two, energy efficiency. We have to make sure that our businesses, our homes, and our municipal buildings are as efficient as possible. This, of course, would involve things like MassSave and the ESCO contract that we're looking at for Westford. And then third, and very importantly, is the decarbonization of our electric supply. So if we are transitioning our transportation over to electricity and transitioning our heating and cooling systems over to electricity, we need to make sure that our electrical supply is or is moving towards being 100% renewable. The state is moving towards that, and here in Westford, we need to move towards that. Now, we know that even if we do everything in those first three columns, we're not going to get to 100%. So that's where carbon sequestration comes in. That term means we need to find ways to take carbon dioxide out of the atmosphere because we know we'll never eliminate all sources of it. Now, in the future, there may be highly technical ways of doing that. There's nothing cost-effective right now other than trees and natural resources. So as we heard in the beginning of this meeting, we don't want to be cutting down all the trees. Thank you, Bob Jaffray. So our high priority goals and actions are to green the grid with 100% renewable energy. So here in Westford, we have the Westford Park Program that supplies electricity to most of our, almost all of our residents and businesses. We recently changed that so that there's 10% more renewable energy in the default contract. So across the board, we were using 10% more renewable energy. We need to increase that aggressively every time the contract is renewed to approach 100% renewable energy, not just in that contract, but also in our municipal contract as quickly as possible. We also need to work with our businesses in town to find out how much renewable energy is in their electric contracts and to set goals for them for renewable energy. The city of Boston recently passed legislation requiring their large businesses to report on their energy use. Approving energy efficiency and reducing emissions in our buildings, this is 58%, so this is huge. We need to improve energy efficiency, as I talked about earlier. Electrify our heating and cooling systems. And in this area, we are not saying that we are suggesting that everyone rip out their current systems, their current gas systems, and replace them with an energy-efficient heat pump. But we are recommending, when the time comes, for a resident or a business or one of our municipal buildings to replace an existing system, an existing fossil fuel system, that that would be replaced with an energy-efficient system, like a heat pump. We need to look at changing our building codes, zoning, and bylaws to make sure that new buildings and big renovations are energy-efficient. And then set clearly defined standards for our municipal buildings. So as you see at the bottom of each one of these charts, the roadmap itself includes much more detail on how to go about doing these things. So we, it is an actionable plan, a plan that takes these goals and brings them down to action level. Transition to electric vehicles. Again, similar on this one. We're not saying that people should get rid of their current vehicles and replace them with an electric vehicle tomorrow. But when the time comes to replace your vehicle or when your family is adding additional vehicle or the town is purchasing vehicles, consider an electric vehicle. Luckily, electric vehicles have come way down in cost. There are many more available than there were in the past. Their range is increasing, the batteries are more powerful. So I think it's actually a very good alternative. Oh, it's supply stations, charging stations in town. Right now, we're putting charging stations in Town Hall, the Abbott School, and Westford Academy. We need to continue to do that throughout town. And natural resources, I talked about this in the beginning. We need to make sure that we preserve our trees, our wetlands, and so on, so that carbon is sequestered. Now, what I thought would be a good thing would be to just give you a sample. I'm not going to read through these, but I wanted you to see a sample of what the actions items are that we're recommending. Put your attention on the first one, the creation of an Electrify Westford program and website to provide information on energy efficiency. I think this should be one of the first steps we do because right now, there's a lack of good information for people on electric vehicles, heat pumps. Many people have old ideas that vehicles are very expensive, heat pumps don't work in northern climates, and so on. I think we could make a lot of progress with that. We have actually a heat pump webinar that Westford Climate Action is running tomorrow night. Over 60 people have signed up for that webinar, which I think shows the need for that kind of information in town. So I won't go through the rest of these because I know that we want time for questions, but it's just a sample of the type of actions that we have in the plan. So governance, one of our high priority items. After working on this plan, we believe that a successful implementation will require dedicated staffing because it's a broad, a very broad program. And as I said in the beginning, when we first looked at the resolution that passed town meeting, in the past, many times, our municipal leaders have been focused on our municipal buildings. This goes beyond that. This program includes our residents and our businesses. And in order to orchestrate a broad program like that, requiring a significant commitment and action from everyone in our community, including residents, businesses, boards, and staff, we feel like we need somebody who will be committed to this, working on this every day, managing energy efficiency and greenhouse gas reduction programs. I think very important, we'll be communicating and advocating with state agencies, energy providers like National Grid. There have been many questions about our grid, and I think we need somebody focused on that. And there are, the local cities and towns, many of them are a year or two ahead of us in this process, communicating with those towns and regional organizations. As I think you have heard, at a national level and a state level, there's legislation going through right now as we speak that will be, if they are successful, will be funneling money and grants and incentives down to the cities, towns, businesses, and people to meet those state and national goals that we talked about on the first slide. So I think we need somebody focused on acquisition, making sure people in our town are aware of all those opportunities. And I think, as everybody knows, we have a very strong volunteer commitment in this town. Westford Climate Action and many other people in this town are very committed to this program, to climate action. But we need someone to leverage that, all that energy, and measure and report on the progress of the roadmap. We believe, after talking to many energy people in other towns, that these types of positions can pay for themselves in grants and reduced energy costs.
Hey, Beth, I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, okay? Because you've been going for almost 30 minutes now.
Oh, sorry. Well, I don't know. Did anyone time me? Okay, this is it. These are, these are the towns in our area with energy or sustainability positions, 37 towns. And now I'm ready for questions.
All right. Thank you very much. First off, I just want to say to you, Beth, and to the entire committee, wow, you guys have been really, really busy and have done an incredible amount of work and research over the last nine months. So kudos to the entire committee, and thank you to the entire committee for really bringing this all together and presenting all of this information, which is a lot of information, honestly, to digest tonight to us. So I really want to commend the whole committee for all of the work that you've done. So thank you very much for that. Jody? And then I'm going to open it up to questions from the board first, and then if we have questions from the audience.
Yes, thank you, Beth. And I did get my own personal presentation of this, the longer version of this, a couple of weeks ago. And what I did, I also met with Carol Morse from Climate Action. And I don't think that everyone really realized that the Assistant Town Manager, Eric Kiederman, a great deal of his job description is centered around energy. And so at that point, and because facilities went to Paul Fox, that freed him up on a lot of times. So I have asked Eric to attend their meetings, which he has started doing, and to really provide some administrative support to that committee as they move forward. So that's been happening, right, Beth?
Yes, it has. Yes, it has.
And, you know, and obviously, Eric was very instrumental in the electric car, charging stations, and other projects. So I just wanted to throw that out there to the board, that Eric is assigned to assist them in their endeavors at this point, so.
That's great, and it makes perfect sense that Eric be assigned to them since he has, you know, he's gotten us the EV grants, and he was instrumental in having the town declared a green community, and he's worked on the LED lights. So energy really has become a big part of his portfolio here in the town. So with that, questions or comments from the board? Tom, and then John?
Just to echo the compliments so far, the high level of energy from this committee and all the work, hard work being done. So we all appreciate that and are benefiting from it. This may be kind of in the detail category, but I'd be really interested, now that some of the communities near us have had sustainability manager positions in place for more than a year, if there's any kind of, like, end-of-year summary of actions and results? Because I think, if we think about prioritizing resources in town, if we had a sense that, here's what happens in the first year after adding this kind of resource, and this is the kind of impact it had, this is how the amount of grants received changed, whatever, I think that would just help me in thinking about priorities. So if that is something you're able to pull from some of our neighbor communities that are a year or two ahead of us, I think it would help me. Thanks.
John?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what you said, Andrea, about the presentation. I think it was great. I've attended some of their meetings, their virtual meetings, and I'd like to commend the committee for the efforts that they've put forth. I mean, this is tremendous progress. I have, my concerns, or not concerns, is just a question about the sustainability position. You seem to be pretty, you've attached some urgency to that. I wondered, what would be appropriate time, do you think, going in the next future? How soon would you see that happening or would want that to happen? What relationship would that position have to, say, town manager, select board, other committees? And then what do you see your committee's role moving forward? Because I think you've done a tremendous job. I'd like to see that continue, and so those are my questions.
Beth, do you want to answer them, or does somebody else?
I can say that, first of all, thank you to Eric. We really, I think, are in a position where we have not yet begun to fight, like, we have not yet begun to implement this plan. And Eric certainly has been able to help us out with what we have needed. Now, I'm also wondering if there are other ways to get funding for some of the maybe short-term things that we're going to need. You know, I was talking to Tom Clay about this the other day, that the first thing I was explaining that I think we need is a central place for information where people can go and find out about what's happening, what the plan is, get advice from other residents, and so on. You know, there may be ways to get help from other people in town or maybe other grants to get things like that off the ground. And, but then, what I'm thinking of, because this is a roadmap to 2050, you know, that's a long timeframe. And I believe, in order to be successful in the long, the long term, we do need someone monitoring progress and working with National Grid and doing all the things that are going to need to happen, but.
Okay.
Other questions from the board? Anita?
You know, I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I thought this presentation was excellent, and thank you so much for walking through it. Even if it did feel like on the longer side, I thought it was great. I really enjoyed it. I thought it had a lot of really great information. And to just kind of piggyback off that comment about the sustainability coordinator, you know, looking through what they would potentially need to do, so many of that is just like meetings and outreach, building buy-in with stakeholders. And that takes up so much time, building those relationships, building, you know, building that buy-in. And that kind of makes, I have just a general question. You don't have to answer it today. But I'd be really curious- but I'd be really curious to know if you have any businesses who are already sort of on board and who'd be able to help be an ambassador or champion for you for those other businesses in town? Businesses, you know, the business voice resonates with other businesses, right? As opposed to like a public official or, you know, public resident. Just something to consider. And also, I know you're not going over the community survey results tonight, but I'm really curious to learn about that and hear what they are, just to see what the discrepancy is between like what we think versus what you're hearing from the town. And even the greenhouse gases emissions chart that you had earlier in your presentation, that that data was from 2017. I wonder how much of an impact that Westford Pop has already had in, you know, in just like this first year of that 10%. I'd be really curious to see that too later.
Right. We will be, we look at the roadmap as being a living document that will be renewed, you know, let's say every two or three years. We haven't established a timeframe yet. And certainly that inventory will need to be regenerated. And we are looking, or we can look at actual data of how many people have signed up for Westford Pop, or we have access to all of that data in that inventory.
Yeah, go ahead.
I just had one more comment or thought that I forgot to mention in my first spiel. And that basically is, you know, kind of coming off the whole Boston Road conversation during our last meeting. I was thinking about those passenger vehicles and that admissions, you know, percentage that you had that's not Westford residents. It's always helpful to kind of hear you talk about, you know, we're never going to get realistically to zero. So we have to think about the trees or the environment or whatever to kind of reduce that. So I was thinking through that a little bit while you were talking.
Scott?
Yeah, so I'll, I'm making unanimous an appreciation for the presentation and all the research. One question, I guess, is the towns that have these, whatever the title may be, but their sustainability coordinator, are these, you know, 100% dedicated positions? Because I'm thinking there are sort of ancillary things we need, like recycling, for example, which is not really part of sustainability, but it is. So are there, I guess, logical ancillary, you know, agencies, if you will, that this person would be able to monitor to make it, you know, more of a cohesive, you know, spot in town?
Well, Scott, that's interesting, bringing that up. When we first presented to Jody and Town Management, we actually included the fact that this sustainability coordinator could also function as a recycling coordinator. Tonight, I was presenting strictly on the roadmap, but we talked that through with Jody at our Town Management presentation. So I absolutely think that's a possibility, that we could do that. And the general answer is, in the cities and towns that we've looked at, some are part-time and some are full-time. And I think Eric has talked with towns that are actually using regional sustainability coordinators, although both Eric and I and others have issues with that. We don't really know how that would work. But some towns are coming up with regional sustainability coordinators. But I will absolutely get more data out along the lines of what Tom Clay was asking for from other towns. Westford Climate Action has pulled together an enormous amount of information on this and I could get more information to you.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, following up on what both Tom and Scott have said, I'd be really interested in having that kind of data, Beth, and seeing, you know, the before and after, so to speak.
Okay.
I'd also be interested in learning, you know, if, if going forward with, you know, this position, whatever we call it, okay? Since there are now 37 communities that have it out there, I'd be interested in sort of, you know, their job descriptions, the structural component of it, you know, where they fit in the town structure, how they report, you know? Is it working? Is it not working? What's good, what's not good? So that we don't have to reinvent the wheel, basically. If there's a model out there that we can, you know, adapt or pull from different models to create our own. But, you know, I'd be interested in, and I think, you know, if we were going to move forward with that position, it would be really important to have that kind of information to help us to move along. And then the other thing, I certainly, you know, having a central place where all of this information is gathered, I think would be enormously helpful to both the residents and the businesses in our community. You know, many of us will spend hours, you know, Googling or online, trying to find out about, you know, heat pumps or, you know, solar energy or, you know, who can I call to have solar panels put on my roof? You know, who's reputable, who's not reputable? And having, you know, one, you know, central place where people can, you know, put all this information, I think would really move it, would be, you know, just a great resource for our town. And like Anita, I'm really interested to see what the community survey shows because I'm really interested to see whether our perception matches what the community is thinking.
Right.
Somehow I think that we're going to be surprised in some ways. Scott?
Well, I was going to add that I sort of share, you know, Eric and Beth's view of your regional, you know, sharing is, is fraught with difficulty. But if I look at the housing, you know, the Full Housing Committee that we've had over many years, we're a good-sized town. Chelmsford is bigger. We've learned a lot from Chelmsford locally. But we're also a lot bigger than our other neighbors like Groton and Littleton. So we've, you know, share, our Full Housing folks have worked with those agencies as well. So it may be that if you look at, not a pure regional model, but, you know, do we share somebody, you know, if it's 60, 40, 70, 30, you know, with us and perhaps another small town to coordinate? You know, we are on the same highway as Littleton, basically, in terms of Route 110. And it might make sense to coordinate from a business perspective with Littleton. Just a thought to throw out there.
Which also makes me think, and I think this ties into it, and again, getting, you know, into different areas, not only recycling, but, you know, transportation and, you know, between businesses in Littleton and Westford, I know we have LRTA. I know that, you know, you've got, you know, the commuter rail and trying to do, you know, also transportation with the commuter rail. But I think, you know, when you're talking about passenger vehicles being, what, almost 40% of emissions? I think, you know, that's, that's another area where we might also look at and where this position, the person who holds this position might also be able to coordinate with.
That's a good suggestion.
So, all right, we have a couple of comments from the audience or questions. So Emily Teller, you have your hand up, so go ahead.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say I'm really excited about the response of the Select Board and all of you to this. I think your questions are fabulous and I think your partnership going forward is going to be so significant in so many areas. You know, I can envision changing some of our zoning bylaws to encourage people who are building in town to have clean energy in their buildings and things like that. I did want to invite all of you to the webinar tomorrow. It's from 7:30 to, 7 to 8:30. And you can sign up on the westfordclimateaction.org website. I think you'll learn a lot. It's going to be a lot of information about heat pumps in a very small amount of time. So come if you can and thanks for your commitment to the town and the future of all of us.
Emily or Beth, is that, if for people who maybe cannot attend the webinar tomorrow night, will it be available for public viewing at some, for others to view at their leisure if they can't attend tomorrow night?
Yes, Westford CAT is doing the recording.
Okay.
And so that'll be fine. And we were in The Globe on Sunday. So, you know, a lot of this has gone out into a wider area than Westford. So I'm, I'll be curious to see who the 60 people are. But that's a huge turnout for something like this.
Absolutely. Okay. Swimmin Banajery, and if I have, you know, mangled your name, I apologize.
Andrea, you can hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, thanks, Beth. Very great presentation on behalf of the Climate Action Committee. I just wanted to say one or two things on the questions that the Select Board has raised. So the first bit is, we'll have to understand that the sustainability, you know, is an ever-evolving role. If you see, I mean, a few years back, you did not have corporates having sustainability managers. But today, if you see, most corporates have a sustainability manager and their role is in, you know, in last parts, what Beth mentioned in terms of whether it's clean energy, whether it's water conservation, whether it's life cycle analysis, or whether it's even recycling, as Scott, you were mentioning a few minutes back. And obviously now, many of the universities have a proper course, graduate and undergraduate on sustainability. So I mean, there's a lot of opportunities of, you know, individuals coming out from universities who can either as part of internship or otherwise also, you know, work on some of these aspects. So I mean, this is an ever-evolving role. We need to take a jump somewhere. And Scott, I mean, your proposal of sharing with Littleton or Groton is also great. So I would say let's make a start and over the years we can, you know, build on this role. So thanks once again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you raise an interesting point, you know, maybe, you know, even starting, you know, trying to develop, you know, a place, a central place for all this information. Perhaps, perhaps there's an intern at UMass Lowell who might be interested in, you know, who we could offer this to, you know, for credit or something. But, you know, certainly I think UMass Lowell could be a resource that we might be able to take advantage of as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any other hands raised. So Beth, what else would you like from us tonight? Moving forward, at some point, do you want to come back and report to us? I think we're all interested to hear about the community survey. So, yeah, when things are tallied, if you'd like to come back and present that to us, we'd love to have you.
That would be great. That would be a great opportunity. And at that point, we will have had an approved plan. So we can actually get you a copy of the roadmap and the results of the survey and, you know, maybe talk about some of these other issues. So we would love to come back.
Great.
It's a big subject. I mean, there's no way to make it into 10 minutes, really. So it would be great to come back.
No, absolutely. So I will leave it to you and the committee to let us know when you're ready to come back. And when you are, we'll put you on the agenda again.
Thank you. Thanks to all of you.
And thank, once again, thanks to all of you for all of your hard work and everything you've done so far. It really is pretty amazing. So thanks and have a great night, everyone. Okay. We are at our 7:45 PM item, which is to consider the process for determining prioritization of uses of the ARPA, otherwise known as the American Rescue Plan Act funds. So Jody or Dan, which, who's presenting here?
Well, I think if someone could pull up the memo in the packet, that would be great. That's Eric out there.
I'm just bringing it up right now. Jody?
Okay. So basically, after the recent joint chairs meeting, we took some direction from our chair and vice chair to give you kind of an idea of how you might want to move forward on the process of examining the ARPA funds and the requests, more importantly. So I think if we can get that up there. One thing that did happen since we met is that originally there was a late October deadline, but that has now been moved till April. So there is a lot more time to figure this out. But, so I think what the, what the chairs told us is that they thought we could, we could divide this process into two phases. The first, originally we said six to eight weeks and you all suggested that we consider requests directly related to the impacts from the pandemic. And then we, you gave some of the categories, mental health, food security, rental assistance and maybe small business grants or loans. And then after the board examined those requests, which seemed higher priority directly related to the pandemic, then they could look at all other requests. And again, the date right now to be allocated is December 31st of 2024. So that gives you three years. And we did suggest that it might be necessary for us to consider some administrative assistance to assist the Finance Department with keeping track of all these projects and funding. It might be a part-time assistance. And then secondly, we suggested if anything falls under a capital category, that it go through capital planning first so that at least capital planning has deemed it a high priority for the town before you consider it for ARPA. That's kind of a summary of what we talked about. And then we just gave you a chart below that shows what the allocation is, what you've already committed to, and so where we are on the balance. And then we also attached the requests to date and they were updated twice today. So they're still coming in. And we did try to categorize ourselves into things that we felt were directly related to the pandemic. And then other requests, we put down at the bottom. We also gave you in your packet a list from the federal government of items that they believe fall into the categories that could be approved. So that's, that is what we put in your packet and we're just kind of looking for you all to decide your process. It wasn't really about looking at any specific projects tonight.
I just have one request, Jody, as we go forward and we get more requests that you add to this list. Could you like put them by date when you get the new requests? Because I find myself going through it and trying to figure out which ones are the new ones and which ones are the old ones. So if you could just put, it would be helpful to me. I mean, I figured out today, obviously, the ones at the end were the, were the new ones. But if, as you keep this list, if you could, when new ones are added, just add the date so we can keep track of when they come in and also, you know, which are new and which are old, that would be helpful.
Sure, we're happy to do that.
Anita?
I have a couple of questions and one is that I see, you know, but it doesn't matter. Okay. Interface is listed a couple of times in that list and I assume it's because you just wanted to catalog that there were two requests for that one ask. And, but when I was listening in on a school committee meeting a few weeks ago, they had mentioned they would be putting money towards Interface. And so I just wanted to make sure that that's like considered into this bigger picture of lists, you know, that we're not going to be paying for it twice, for example.
Yeah, Jody.
Yes, I'm not aware it's on there twice. It shouldn't be. It should just be once. That would be an error on our part if it's there twice and we'll correct that. But I did talk to Carrie Clary. She had put in to use the school funding for that purpose. So it's in her sheet and then we had it in ours and we are applying for an Emerson Hospital grant right now for that too. And if we're able to get that grant, then we could remove it. But we definitely, if Carrie's got it, we should remove it from our list in the time being. So thank you for letting us know that.
Okay, I think it's important, Jody, that you and if it's, whether it's you and Carrie, who, I mean, if it's Carrie who's heading it up on the school side or Dr. Chu, whoever it is, that it just is important, you know, we coordinate, as Anita said, so we're not both asking for the same thing.
Yeah, great idea. And generally for the list of stuff that was on your first page of the memo, where it's like mental health requests, something, something, something else that I'm interested in kind of understanding more as well, that I, that I personally feel like it is a COVID-related expense, is all of this virtual stuff that we have. If there are any cybersecurity needs that we might need to beef up anything, if there's accessibility needs related to the Zoom platform that we have, you know, for like cart reporters or like, you know, kind of like the computer, you know, automated generated script stuff. If there's anything like that that could improve our accessibility for people with disabilities in the community, I would be interested in considering that. And I guess in terms of prioritizing this list, I don't have a clear thought on that, but I do have a desire to include the community in some sort of way. I know that some people are kind of hemming and hawing over a community-wide survey, whether or not that's the best approach. whether or not that's the best approach. But I feel like kind of just having this, oh, send us an email, you know, who might be catching our meeting, doesn't seem very thorough in terms of catching the community. So I just wanted to share that thought.
Great, thank you. John, did you have your hand up? Did I see your hand up?
Yes, I did. I like the way that they're phasing it, phase one and phase two. I think it works very well. And when we get the new ones, they kind of slip into that phase. I think reviewing it like we do a financial issue in any other way is going through a process. It says, as we gather it, then we have to have a prioritization and go from there. But I like the way they've set it up for phase one and phase two.
Great, thanks. Scott?
Yeah, I'm thinking that, and I, with great trepidation, I'm thinking this. But, you know, when we do the budget every year, you know, we give Jody a sort of guidelines, which are prioritized, you know, first, we must, you know, pay debt. Secondly, we must maintain services, you know, all of these things. And then finally, you get to the point of what's optional or less, you know, critical. And it seems like we want to do something here where, so far, we said, well, it should be COVID-related, which is a pretty broad, you know, brush already. As I look at, so these capital needs, you know, on what basis would we say, well, is a fire training tower more COVID-related than the new HFR system at the senior center, right? That's what I think. I don't have the answer in my head right now. But just like, we need to create a similar set of rules or guidelines for this process, as we have for the budget process, to kind of make things more transparent to the community and better organized for ourselves.
Yeah, I agree.
Tom?
Yeah, thanks, Andrea. So one thing we did talk about in the joint chairs meeting is one method of getting good public input is to rely on all the committees that we have, who are thoughtfully working on all of this. So is part of the sort of request collection process, Jody, would we then communicate with all the committees and maybe give them a very simple form, you know, two or three questions if they want to submit something for consideration during this first phase?
Go ahead, Jody.
I did send out a request for ideas to boards and committees. I didn't give a, you know, ask some question type thing or survey, but I did send an email to everyone and asked for ideas. But if you'd like us to come up with some sort of questions or survey or whatever, we certainly can do that.
Tom?
Just to build on that, I think if we, if we agree on the structure tonight and can set some dates on it, maybe a recommunication to some of the committees saying, if you have a request, this is the information we need. We'd like it in this timeframe, because I think we do need to get good input. We went back and forth a little bit on what the best way to do that was. And we thought at least a very good way is to get the committees really engaged, because they're thoughtfully looking at all these issues on behalf of the community.
Anita?
Was there a reason why phase one is six to eight weeks? I just didn't know if there was a certain reason for that timeframe.
Honestly, it kind of seemed, honestly, Anita, like a reasonable timeframe, you know, long enough for people to respond and to give us their ideas, took into consideration, you know, holidays that, you know, starting to come up and, you know, to give. And that was really, you know, that was really, it just, it sort of felt like the appropriate amount of time. Anything less than six weeks felt like too short a time. But we also didn't want to go much beyond two months, because then it started to feel like that was too long. So it was kind of subjective, to be honest with you, okay?
And I guess the follow-up to that is, are we, is there like a certain percentage then that we would link with phase one? Or is it just, because that could be, end up being like, you know, 90% or 40% of the funds, right?
You know, I don't think we linked a percentage to it. You know, I think part of it was we sort of, we needed to see what comes in before you can determine, you know, how much, you know, we should be spending on, you know, sort of on the first phase and how much we should hold in reserve. And then we also have Dan, who reminds us that, you know, I guess, the reporting requirements for use of these funds is incredibly complex and complicated. We've also still got CARES Act funds that we can still use before the end of the year. But again, we want to make sure that we use them in such a way that they're accepted. And, you know, we don't get, it doesn't get bounced back to us and tell us, you know, sorry, we're not going to pay for that, because that would not be good. So, you know, figuring all that in, I think, is sort of like where we are. And it's hard to say, you know, to set a percentage. John?
Yes, is that six to eight weeks meant to be a timeframe for us to gather information, understand the impact of these different categories? And then the work on prioritization and actual allocation would come after that? I think six to eight weeks may be a little bit too short timeframe for us to start allocating the funds. And the other thing is, I think half of the money has to be allocated by a certain period of time, does it not? So we're looking at that first 50% first on. And then we've got the second half coming that lasts until 2024.
Dan, can you answer John's question about that, or Jody?
So all the money has to be allocated by 2024 and then must be spent by 2026. So we do have time. The first half doesn't have to be spent by any specific time, except that 2024.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Okay, what about the four to six weeks then?
What is, no, six to eight.
Six to eight, I'm sorry, I shortened myself, yeah.
Six to eight. We really, I think that we envision that as gathering the information, giving people time, giving us time to consider it. But I don't know that we determined, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jody or Tom, that we would have made a final decision in terms of prioritization by the end of eight weeks, but that we'd be well on our way to making those decisions. Is that right, Tom, or?
Yeah, I think that's right. I think we, good comments have been made about how do we prioritize? The urgency, I think, was at least in part to make sure that people who are in a real position of need related to COVID, we got the money to work quickly. The concern in the meeting that we had was if the process is too open-ended and there are really urgent needs that we need to get some attention on, let's get those needs documented and in some sort of submission process in six to eight weeks. And then we probably have a little more discussion as a board to figure out what guidance we give Jody, how the prioritization works. But we just want to make sure that we're not locked in our own process for six months so that people who are really in need, who could benefit from these funds, aren't getting it.
Yeah, that's good. Thanks.
Scott?
It's true, the thoughts, so, and I think, piggybacking on one of Tom's thoughts, that I know on the Housing Committee or Housing Trust, as we maybe now, we allocated some money for households that were dealing with, you know, rent shock. And that money was surprisingly, you know, quick to go. And that is a current problem. You know, if you look at what's happening with food prices right now, some of that is, you know, inflation, some of it is in fact COVID shock from how we handled supply chains with, you know, beef, for example, and so forth during 2020. So there's a very real need to think for assistance from those with fixed incomes that aren't used to seeing prices change by 20% at the supermarket. So, yeah, can we frontload some of that need to those who might need it today and may not need it in two years? And then the second question was, one of the items on that list was, you know, some kind of a one-time payment to workers who had extreme risk, if you will, during COVID. I was kind of curious, Jody's standpoint, what other towns have done, if anything, with that? You know, because there's, you know, there's some employees who took, you know, greater risk, obviously, emergency first responders. Others worked a lot of overtime, you know, our nurses and so forth to handle that. And I guess are other towns taking steps to acknowledge that? Or would we be an outlier in that case?
Go ahead, Jody.
I honestly don't know, Scott. I have only had one of our units express interest in that type of pay, and that was our highway collective bargaining unit. I haven't heard from the others. But I'm happy to reach out to other towns and see if any are offering that type of incentive.
I was thinking it's worthwhile to know the answer. It may or may not be something we want to do. But if we, if it did get to the top of it, or did it get on the list, I think we'd be asking you to look at it then. So, you know, maybe get the answer now would be worthwhile.
Okay, Tom?
This is only sort of related, but Jody already mentioned that we're going to go after the Emerson grant for Interface, which is one of the important mental health services. The other thing that that grant has written that could be a very close fit for use is funding to help support the community wellness coordinator position. And I just wanted to mention it to the board. I understand there's a whole process that has to go, we have to go through together before we're going to decide whether we're going to create a new position. So I don't want there to be any appearance of shortcutting that. But the due date for the submission, I think, is the 18th, and it's reasonable money. So if it is a good fit for use of those funds, it seems like we might as well see if we can grab a share of those. So I just want to mention it to this group and just make it clear that obviously, no decision's been made here that requires all of our input and deliberation. So if you see or hear anything about that.
So, you know, with all the caveats that you just expressed, Tom, I certainly don't see any reason why not to at least, you know, apply if, you know, if by the time the grant comes through, we haven't reached into the decision about the wellness coordinator, then, you know, I guess, you know, we don't use the grant and we turn it back. But if we have, and if it's available, that's something that we should take advantage of. Anita?
Yeah, I was kind of thinking something similar to that, but not exactly. I was wondering, I'm assuming Ray Dick has gone through this list, or she's been, it's been shared with her. But I would be interested in knowing if there's anything that came out of the needs assessment that that regional grant coordinator did. If there's anything that's specific to Westford related to COVID, maybe that's something we could add to this list as well. Just more stuff to add.
Yeah, no, good point. Just, this keeps going. Okay, so I guess two things. First, is there a consensus that we should, in addition to applying for the grant for Interface, we should also submit a second application for the wellness coordinator?
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
I think so.
All right, seeing everyone nodding their heads, we will do that. And then in terms of moving forward with respect to, you know, gathering information and starting, you know, prioritizing needs, I think Tom's suggestion was to try and put together, basically, a couple, we submit, we send out to our committees and boards with a couple of questions and dates by which to submit their replies to us, just to ensure that we're getting as much public input as we can in this process. So perhaps we can, maybe Tom and Jody can talk offline, put together a couple of questions in a timeline, and then get back to us. All right, I'm seeing thumbs up, so great.
You have 30 days.
No, they'll get back to us before then, John. All right, great. I think we have a plan moving forward, and this all sounds good. Okay, we're at our 8:05 PM item, which is a request from the Conservation Commission to grant conservation restrictions on the following properties. The Switzer Conservation Land on Lowell Road, the Timberlake Conservation Land on Tenny Road and Wing Road, the Stupinski Conservation Land on River Street, the Shelley Lane Conservation Land on Shelley Lane, the Connolly Conservation Land off of the Rome Drive Extension, and the Genova Conservation Land on Stony Brook Road. But Jody, I know that you want to tell us, one is coming off tonight.
Yes, thank you. I'd like you to not vote on the CR 79 Genova Conservation Land, because that is the property that we're trying to repair, the Stony Brook Bridge, and we don't want to put this in place until that's done. So we'll bring it back after that project's complete.
Okay, anybody have any questions? I see that our Conservation Resource Planner is with us. So if anybody has any questions, Matt is with us. John?
Hey, Matt, what's the reason for the timing on this? This is all conservation land. So what's the need to transfer this over to the conservation restriction area?
So these properties were purchased using Community Preservation Act funds that were allocated between, I think, well, wow, they're all 2003 up to 2010. So with those properties, we need to establish or create create the conservation restriction for, with a third-party local land trust. The Westford Conservation Trust has been so kind as to be the grantor for them. So we're, that's the timing. And they just never were done up until now. This was one of Carol Gumbart's kind of last acts as, last actions as when she retired. So we're just trying to get them set up and get them established now.
Under the Community Preservation Act, John, to use those funds, you've got to set up a conservation restriction. So if you think about East Boston Camps, the Westford, the Westford Land Preservation holds it, O'Brien Farms, Sudbury, Sudbury Valley Trust holds the CR on O'Brien Farm. They're also holding the CR on the land that just went into CR off of Tildrith.
Saltbox Farm.
Saltbox, thank you. I had a mind blank for a minute and couldn't come up with salt.
We have a lot of them.
So that's the reason why, and I guess it was never done for these parcels.
Is there any other, you know, conservation? I think last time I checked, we had somewhere around 22,000, 2,500 acres in conservation land. And I just wondered, how much of that does not have CR on it? Do we have any conservation, is Emmett, does Emmett Conservation Land have a CR on it?
No, that's, I would have to look and can certainly get the actual statistics for the next meeting for the board, specifically as to what amount of land under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission has a CR on it and what doesn't.
Okay. Let's see. That's it, that's all. Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Any other questions or comments? All right, I don't see any. So why don't we vote these as a group? Okay, is there a motion to put, to grant to the, to grant a conservation restriction to the Conservation Trust Committee on the properties listed on our agenda tonight?
I'm going to show move. All right, second.
With the exception of the Stony Brook Road land, which is being removed, okay? All right, we had a motion in a second. All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Matt.
One last thing for Matt. You know, we're taking that one off. I assume the Conservation Commission is keeping a close eye on the construction work.
So right now, the engineering department is, I think, only at the 25% design phase. So I mean, where it
So, I mean, where it, it is still under the care custody and control of the commission. So ultimately, they'll need, you know, to present the plan to the commission. It's also right next to Stoney Brook. So there, there, there will be Conservation Commission, I, I fully expect Conservation Commission oversight and review.
Okay, thank you, Matt.
For that.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Lord.
Okay, old and new business. We have a request from the Healthy Westford Committee to repave the Poly Road entrance to Navnassett School. Bill, you're up.
Hello?
We did that night.
That's okay. Good evening. I'd like to call your attention to the, wait a minute here, starting my video. Call your attention to the Navnassett School. It has two entrances, two paved entrances. The main one directly from Plain Road is an ordinary road with two lanes and wide enough for school buses. The other one, though, is a single lane road paved, but the pavement is very deteriorated and just because of age. And so our, the reason we'd like to call this to your attention, we're hoping for support from the board for having that repaved now. And of course, there's nothing unusual about repaving some asphalt that has gotten too old. In this case, this is very useful as a walking entrance to the school. People have been doing this for many years. And actually, one of our members of the Healthy Westford Committee was, their family was doing this a lot and called this to our attention. And it would, not only do we think it should, which is sort of a straightforward thing to do, but it should also be considered a wheelchair accessible way for, for people like that to come into the school. So that's, that's our request. It's from the committee. I'm just the spokesman for the committee.
Okay, thank you. And I guess, based on what the comments that we have in our packets, the, the principal of the school and Dr. Chu also did not have any issues with that. Is, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I think they're both supportive of this.
Okay. Jody, you had your hand up?
Thank you. I was going to say that, but then you said it. So we're all set. I think Steve Cronin might have a comment, though.
Okay. Steve?
Hi. So Bill is correct, the pavement out there is significantly deteriorated. I walked it this week with, or last week rather, with the engineering department along with the facilities director. There is going to need to be some preliminary engineering that goes along with this request. We, we don't recommend paving over the asphalt that's currently there just because of the condition of the, the existing asphalt. We feel that it really won't last over, over the long term. So, you know, there are sections that should be removed, the sub base and the base reestablished, really to prolong the life of the asphalt that we put down. There are some shallow tree roots out there that should probably be addressed as well because those have started to poke up through the, through the asphalt. So, you know, just some additional work that should be considered and, and some additional evaluation done before we, we go ahead and pave this. You know, it's our recommendation that it goes through probably the standard capital process so we can get those estimates for that type of work and bring it before capital planning. You know, but it's something we're certainly willing to assist with and support as this moves forward.
Okay. Scott?
Yeah, I would just say that we discussed this last question, this meeting, and, you know, we supported it as well as a, as a commission. I guess my question, though, is, is this a valid use for our asphalt plant mitigation asphalt?
I had asked that question as well, Scott, is, is, yeah, can, can we, materials? Jody?
Yes, we can. And we're actually going to be reporting at our next meeting to all of you on what we've used it for to date. So just so the public understands and you understand, we follow the capital planning and then once there's recommendations, we decide what mitigation can be used for and then we offset the costs with that. So we're, we're not out deciding what to spend the mitigation on ourselves. We're following capital planning, but this certainly could fit into that.
Great, thank you. So I guess then the, are the next steps, Stephen, Jody? For, you know, Steve, for you to gather the estimates that you need and the information you need and then present it to capital?
Yeah, we can certainly bring this request to capital. I don't know if, Bill, if you can speak to whether or not pedestrian safety has been consulted on this as well and if they support this request. Typically, these type of requests will go through Pedestrian Safety Committee. They have a prioritized plan that we work with them on and that we, we bring to capital.
Scott? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Bill. I know Scott's on our pedestrian, is our, is the select board rep to the Pedestrian Safety Committee, so I'm wondering if he has the answer to the question.
It's, it's not a, it's not a path that was on our priority plan just because it, it wasn't, you know, but it is, it has fallen within our, I guess, priority framework in terms of it is a direct link to a school. It improves safety for, for our, our children, especially in that case with a K through two school. So I would say if it's the, the, the framework, if not, you know, being one of our top three priorities. Let's observe, let's observe that, you know, I think in our, our board's direction, you know, the Newport plant disproportionately affects the Nav part of town. So using the mitigation asphalt in, in Nav, to me, makes a lot of sense because it's going where the impact is.
Bill, I, I cut you off. Do you, did you have anything to add to that?
I'd just like to add that one of the members of the Healthy Westford Committee is Don Gallia, who's also on the Pedestrian Safety Committee. So he makes a point of coordinating every issue that we have with that other committee.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so I guess I think we're looking for a motion to, is that what you're about to tell me, Jody? Okay, she keeps me honest. So I'm looking for a motion to support the request from Healthy Westford Committee to repave Poly, Poly Road entrance to Nav School.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. All those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. Thank you, thank you, Bill, for bringing this to our attention.
Thanks a lot. Good night.
Good night. All right. The next item on our agenda is a request from the Town and School Safety Task Force to appoint Dennis Galvin as the Finance Committee Representative for a term expiring on June 30th, 2022. Is there a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, John?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. And thank you to Christina Green, who was the, who had been the Finance Committee Representative for her years of service on that committee. Much appreciated. Then we have a request from the Affordable Housing Trust to appoint Raji Ramachandran as a full member for a term expiring on June 30th, 2023. Is there a motion to appoint Raji?
Moved.
A second?
Thank you.
All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. And then we have a request from the Town Clerk to appoint election offices for terms to expire July 31st, 2022. Is there a motion to appoint?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
All right.
Right. Any board reports or updates? I don't see anything. Minutes for approval. We have the minutes from our regular session of September 24th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve and release?
So moved.
A second? All those in favor, Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
And then we have executive minutes, executive session minutes from September 24th, 2021. Is there a motion to approve but not release?
So moved.
Second? Okay. All those in favor, John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
Hi. Town managers report, you're up, Jody.
Okay, so I have a request from the Assistant Town Manager to accept a grant from the Community Compact Best Practices Program to fund the installation of Level Two Electric Vehicle Charging Stations at Public Works, Water and Fire Department Facilities in the amount of $30,000. And a request from the Council on Aging to accept a grant from Greater Lowell Community Foundation to support mindfulness for better health and mental health in the amount of $3,750. And you want me to keep going? I have contracts, I have the.
Let's do those two and then we'll do the contracts, okay? So is there a motion to approve those two grants?
So moved.
A second? All those in favor, Scott?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Hi. Okay.
Okay, thank you. And so then moving forward, contracts, International Association of Firefighters Collective Bargaining Agreement for Fiscal Years 22 to 24, Davy Resource Group, Inc., for the preparation of a Westford Tree and Invasive Species Inventory and Management Plan in the amount of $79,200. We're going to skip CJF and go down to purchase orders, LHS Associates for voting tabulators in the amount of $42,650, as requested by the Town Clerk, Bergeron Protective Clothing for firefighter protective clothing in the amount of $24,000, Atkinson Carpet and Flooring for multi-purpose room flooring replacement at the Cameron Senior Center in the amount of $21,188, and TI Sales for water meters and washers in the amount of $20,000, as requested by the Water Department.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
A second? All those in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Anita?
Hi.
John?
Hi.
Scott?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay. Correspondence, is there a motion to waive course, reading of correspondence?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, everybody can do this by a show of hands. All those in favor? Ah, okay, it's unanimous. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Daggit.
All those in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Good night, everyone. Good night, Westford. Everybody be safe.
Yeah, you too. Take care.